Here of his constituents and he's just been an overall great kid. And I thought it was appropriate that today he would be the honorary mayor of Delray Oaks. So please put your hands together for me. Okay, now we down the business, so I'm gonna give you this gavel and you get to pound it on the table. But not too hard because we only have one. And you can welcome everyone to the heap, okay? You can do it as many times as you want. You ready? Okay. That's why he's from here. Okay, and now the next, the next part is roll calls and Karen Schreiber.
Councilmember Uli.
Present.
Councilmember Hallock.
Here.
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Rex Strohman. Mayor Donaldson.
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yeah.
All right, then if you could, would everyone please stand as the mayor leads us in our pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge allegiance to the republic of the states of America. And to the right out there, which stands. One nation, under God, and with its all.
All right. So unfortunately, the mayor is a busy guy, as you can imagine, and he needs to go, but before you go, I would like for you to follow me out front. Come on out front, and I've got a certificate of recognition.
Wow.
For, for Mayor Rodriguez.
Wow.
Be, well, on behalf of the entire city council and the city of Delray Oaks. I would like to present to you this certificate of recognition for being our honorary mayor on this twenty-seventh day of August. All right?
There you go.
And thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is a public comment. So public comment must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda, and they do so now. There is a time limit of three minutes for each speaker. Public comment is now open. Oh, and if you could, please, before you speak, just provide your names for us.
Okay, do you mind if I project? I'm sorry, I'm a little loud.
Please.
It's a ex-law enforcement thing, I guess. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chelsea Lenoska. I am here tonight because I am actually running for the Monterey Peninsula Community College District Board of Governors, trustee area three. For those that don't know, that trustee area does encompass the city of Delray Oaks. And so I wanted to make sure that I got out here, announced, introduced myself to everybody that's in the audience today, or anybody who's paying attention online. And just say a little bit about why I'm running. So I have a background in higher education. I worked at a university for a few years and then served on board of trustees from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two. And saw what it takes to have good governance, saw what it takes to lead a major institution and work with its multiple constituents. And lately, if you've seen some of the things that have come out in the news, unfortunately, our MPC board has been plagued with a little bit of internal turmoil. And so I think that it's time for a new voice, a new perspective to raise our hand and say, hey, let's have that conversation. Let's introduce a little competition, and even if I don't pay come November, which I hope I will, and you guys hopefully can, you know, support me in this, this bit. I hope that the conversations are beneficial to the community and it gets more people kind of paying attention to what's going on at MPC. And talking about the ways that we can make the institution better in the future. So if you want to learn more about me, about my campaign, I do have a website, it's W W W, I'm gonna spell it, because it's hard. C H E L S E A, Lenoska, L E N O W S K A dot com. Or I'm totally open to people reaching out to me to talk about their experiences with MPC, their opinions on education policy. So you can contact me directly at eight three one eight seven seven zero seven four two. But I thank you all for your time, and I really look forward to hopefully serving y'all in the future.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments?
Michael Bryan, I live on Rook Avenue in Delray Oaks. I just wanted to do a shout out for one of our officers. I don't think anybody, I think all of us really realize, but maybe not in the other areas, how lucky we are to have a great police department. About a month and a half ago, my bike told me there was someone by my car in the daytime. So I went out there and it wasn't anybody suspicious. There was an old man on the curb. And he was, he was in trouble, didn't want to help for me, but he was a lot of, you know, he just couldn't walk. He was trying to go somewhere. So I called a non-emergency number, and we had a guy come up, Jeffrey Andoy. Took this guy, took him where he's gonna go, and it was all, excuse me, I'm sorry. He took this individual to Broadway Avenue, to the social services over there, had a prosthetic leg. He wanted to make it with this officer, above and beyond the line of duty and health discipline.
Mike, thanks for that.
I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Mike.
All right.
You know, Jeff Andoy is an outstanding officer, and thank you so much for recognizing him for the actions that he took during that time.
Fantastic.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll go on to the next item and keep some good times rolling here. This is a proclamation, recognizing Jameson Jones. And I'll stop right there and just tell you, I think that's such an awesome name. I'm surprised someone from Hollywood hadn't said that. For his outstanding Eagle Scout Service Project, and you can see it up there on the screen. That's one of the kiosks, one of two, that he did along with the help from his troop and other individuals. And there's also one up on Villa Verde, as well as a bench was in place up there as well. So I'd like to read from the proclamation. Jameson Jones, a dedicated member of Boy Scout Troop Ninety-three, has successfully completed this Eagle Scout Service Project. Which has significantly enhanced our community by constructing and installing a park bench and two new community information kiosks. This project was a tremendous undertaking that required leadership, dedication, and hard work. As well as the generous contributions of many community members and local businesses who provided their time, expertise, and materials. The success of this project was further supported by the unwavering encouragement and hands-on assistance from Jameson's family. Including his father David, his mother Jen, and sister Cassidy. As well as members of Boy Scout Troop Ninety-three and Sixty. This project will serve as a lasting legacy of Jameson Jones' hard work. And valuable resource for the residents and visitors of Delray Oaks. And it's signed by me, Mayor Scott Donaldson, on this twenty-seventh day of August. So Jameson, if you can come forward, I'd like to hand that proclamation to you. Thank you so much for what you did. We really appreciate it. And hopefully we put this somewhere that's in a prominent spot. Because we're proud of you.
Thank you, Jameson.
Okay. All right. Our next item is a presentation. We actually have two of them. The first one is community human services. Okay, so that one, it's a lot to reschedule. She couldn't make it. The next one is Central Coast Community Energy, Judith Young.
Yeah, so unfortunately Judy couldn't join us this evening, so I'm here on her behalf. And I will reiterate any comments that you have to hear directly. But my name is Sophia Schwartzy, and I am a customer accounts manager with Central Coast Community Energy. And I just wanted to say thank you to the mayor, the council members, and the city staff, along with the community members, for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. If you can move to the next slide, please. For those of you who don't know, 3CE is a public agency. We were formed about six years ago when the cities and counties that you see on the screen over there. Came together and said, what if we could purchase the electricity to serve our region? What if we could do it better? As a local public agency, could we be competitive in price, make greater progress on renewable energy? And provide investment back into the communities that we serve? I'm here tonight to show you how we're doing and how this community reinvestment has benefited Delray Oaks directly. Next slide, please. As our agency has grown, our investment in the communities we serve has increased. Our budget for community energy programs in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is sixteen point eight million dollars. Which are funds that are available to the city and your constituents to help reduce emissions by electrifying vehicles and buildings. To date, on behalf of the cities and counties we serve, we've invested four point five billion dollars in new renewable energy and energy storage projects. Which are making the grid cleaner and helping the environment by reducing fossil fuel emissions. Next slide, please. Some of those projects include new technologies that are pushing the envelope towards one hundred percent clean and renewable power. Like a compressed air energy storage project, which will be the largest in the world of its kind. Next slide, please. We have the power purchase agreements in place. Or in negotiation to cover eighty percent of our annual load with clean and renewable energy. The challenge is bringing these projects online in a timely manner due to the current backlog in California. Around permitting and grid connection and delays in transmission upgrades. Next slide, please. And yet so much progress is being made. If you haven't heard, the amount of renewable energy on the grid has been exceeding customer demand in California. On nearly a daily basis this spring, for as many as nine hours a day. In fact, for one hundred consecutive days this year. For at least part of the day, the state ran on one hundred percent clean and renewable energy. This is a huge accomplishment, and agencies like Central Coast Community Energy, along with our partners like Delray Oaks. Are very much a part of the reason why our state has been able to accomplish this. Next slide, please. Not only are the renewable projects we contracted with contributing to the solution. But they are also achieving cost savings for our customers. And because of the decision by our policy board last year. These projects are being evaluated based on their commitment to local community engagement, environmental protection, and workforce support. Next slide, please. Our new construction electrification program supports affordable housing projects. Including Village Senior Apartments in Doulton, providing units for seniors, senior veterans, and those who are transitioning from homelessness. We have plans to support new affordable housing projects totaling two hundred units. With completion dates ranging from this year to twenty twenty-six. Next slide, please. In addition to providing clean power, I also spoke about providing a direct reinvestment to the communities we serve. This slide is a summary of the residential, commercial, and app rebates that are available to our customers. Including the ever-popular Electrifier Ride Program. Which offers rebates for new and used vehicles, including battery electric, plug-in hybrid electric, and motorcycles. The rebate is anywhere from one thousand to four thousand dollars for, depending on the income qualifications of the customer who's applying. And 3CE can also help our customers with EV readiness and EV charging, infrastructure installation. And that provides funding of an additional four thousand seven hundred dollars. And I also have a brand new incentive that I want to tell you about today, and that is the residential battery rebate program. So what this program does is it provides our customers who are purchasing residential battery storage with three hundred to five hundred dollars per kilowatt hour of that battery storage capacity. So the three hundred dollar incentive is the base incentive, which all customers who are receiving the rebate can apply for. But if the customer is on a financial assistance program or a medical baseline rate, they can receive an additional two hundred dollars per kilowatt hour of that battery's capacity. So if we're looking at a battery with thirteen kilowatt hours of capacity, for example. A customer who's receiving the base rebate would receive three thousand nine hundred dollars towards that battery. And a customer who is receiving the increased rebate would receive six thousand five hundred dollars towards that battery. Next slide, please. So today, 3CE, 3CE has invested six thousand dollars into the communities, into the community of Delray Oaks. Next slide, please. And one program that I really want to emphasize is the offerings that we have specifically for the city. As you know, California has strict mandates for electrifying even the smallest of fleets. And we know that this can be a major undertaking for local governments. So we have funding to help cities plan how they're going to make the transition to electric vehicles. Including reporting fleet inventory to the California Air Resource Board. And helping determine how many electric vehicles need to purchase, when you purchase them, and where we'll charge those electric vehicles. Next slide, please. We also offer funding to help cities adopt reach codes, which go beyond the state's requirements to drive lower emissions in buildings. And finally, Judy Young, who is your account manager, hosts a quarterly call for the staff of the local governments that make up 3CE. And she will go over all of the opportunities we discussed today, along with any developments that the city would find interesting. So if you want more information on that, please let me know, and I can get it over to the clerk and make sure that you're invited to the next call. Next slide, please. So the last thing that I want to say today is that the applications for all of 3CE's energy programs are available on our website, which is 3Cenergy.org. So I hope you'll head over there and check it out and just see what's on offer. There's some more residential programs that I didn't speak about today. In closing, on behalf of everyone at 3CE, we wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to be your local electricity provider. To support the city and just be a partner with the city. Thank you so much for your time this evening, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. I'll go to the end with Councilmember Uli, if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Sophia, for coming over here, for our community, to enlighten us about this great initiative that you have in your company. I just have a question regarding, like, is we gonna transition or to avail of this? So what are the, the process? Like, like if a resident would want to avail of this incentives? So what, what should we, should we?
Yeah, that is a fantastic question. So in order to participate in any of the residential energy programs that 3CE offers, 3CE offers, all you have to do is be a customer of 3CE. And thankfully, everybody who lives in the city of Delray Oaks is already a customer, because in twenty eighteen, the city decided that we're gonna join, we're gonna make this commitment to clean and renewable energy, local control, and the reinvestment in the communities that 3CE serves. So as long as the person is a customer, they're able to head onto the website and apply to any of the programs that we have. I'm so happy to say that the application process is incredibly streamlined. It's so simple. That's one of the biggest pieces of feedback that we get from our customers is this took me ten minutes to fill out the application. It was so easy. So for any program, you have everything you need on the website, and we also have a dedicated customer service team that can walk any, anybody who's maybe a Spanish speaker who isn't as good with technology, they can walk them through the application and make sure that everyone's able to participate.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, yes. And what are other, like, common challenges of our residents in applying for this? Like, do you know of any?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. One common challenge that I'd say we see is sometimes customers don't realize that they are eligible for the additional incentive. So for example, if there's a customer who participates in California's Energy Bill payment assistance program, which is CARE. Or the federal version, which is FARA, they're eligible for additional incentives on top of those base offerings for all customers. So sometimes people don't realize that they can participate in those state or federal programs. So they're, you know, leaving rebates on the table. So that's one of, a big goal of our communications outreach team is to get out there, make sure that customers, members of communities, or customers who might be eligible for this income qualified programs. Know that it's out there for them. They're getting every possible dollar from our rebates.
Yeah, thank you so much, Sophia.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Hal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again for visiting Delray Oaks and for this beautiful presentation tonight. I just have a couple of questions. You did emphasize affordable rates, mostly through incentives and rebate programs. Just to simplify, in the last six years, so far as individual household billing and affordable rates. How do the rates compare now to bill payer, the community they like, to a drop comparison? How do they rate now compared to prior to the inception or utilization of 3CE from an alternative provider? And then the second part of my question would be, has 3CE, and to what extent added to the job market? Created any job opportunities locally in range? If you could expand on those two points.
Yeah, absolutely. So to your first point. When Central Coast Community Energy was founded, one of those founding principles was we want our rates to be competitive with the investment utility, which in your case is going to be PG&E. So all of your constituents still have a PG&E bill, and they're being billed for transmission and delivery only from PG&E. And then now they're being billed for energy generation by 3CE. Now, it used to be that PG&E was the entity billing your constituents for energy generation. And right now, our rates are about twenty-four percent less for energy generation on average. And I can get you an analysis, kind of comparing the three class more specifically, but on average, your constituents are paying about twenty-four percent less for energy generation with 3CE. And to your second question on workforce development. One of the slides that I talked about mentioned a decision that the policy board made last year to really invest in workforce development. And they did that by adopting the project selection methodology. I don't have it right in front of me, but it really lays out our agency's commitment to work with local workers whenever possible, so I can get that language to you. And another piece is, we have a small and local preference policy. So whenever possible, when our agency is contracting with vendors, we want to work with a small and local business. And one way that local businesses can engage with us is by signing up with our small and local vendor registry. So if they do that, they'll put on our list, and anytime we have the need for a vendor. That a new RFP is issued, it goes directly to those local businesses. And the last piece I'll add there is 3CE is also dedicated to working with diverse suppliers. We participate in the CPUC's supplier diversity program, where anytime we have an RFP, we send our P to the CPUC. And then they distribute it to their registry of diverse suppliers. So we're more likely to have those suppliers coming to us and participating in our process. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Cheryl.
Thank you. Thank you, Sophia, for being here. Appreciate it. I just want to clarify, so I know we have some constituents who may be opted out from 3CE, so they would not be eligible for the rebates, even though we're a member of the agency, correct?
Yes, that is correct. So in order to participate in our programs, they do have to be a customer. The last time I checked, Delray Oaks has about ninety-four percent of their population opted in. So that means ninety-four percent of your constituents are able to participate in our programs. If they have opted out, they can absolutely opt back in. I think there's normally a one-year waiting period that PG&E imposes on them. They're now procuring that additional load for those customers. They need to notice if they're gonna lose those customers. But after that year of being opted out has passed, they have the option to opt back in and then can immediately participate in our programs again.
Okay, okay, good. And then I want to be, can you expand a little bit on some of the rebates just for the residential home? See, we talked about EV readiness. Other things, I'm just, what am I gonna change in my house?
Yeah, absolutely. So by far, our most popular program is the Electrifier Ride Program. So customers are able to apply for rebates for the purchase of new and used electric vehicles. And the rebate for that starts at a thousand dollars, and I believe it can be up to four thousand dollars if it's a customer who is income qualified. So that's the vehicle part of the Electrifier Ride rebate. But there is also rebates for the purchase and installation of electric vehicle chargers. So customers can charge the car that they received a rebate from 3CE in their garage charger, where they received a rebate from 3CE for both the purchase of that charger and then any installation costs that might come with it. The next piece that I'm super excited about is the brand new residential battery storage program, and I talked about that a little bit on the slide. Going over our programs, but it's a brand new program. It launched in July. And any customer who wants to install battery storage for their home is welcome to participate. They don't have to have solar, so they can install the battery and then receive up to five hundred dollars per kilowatt hour of that battery's capacity for the battery. So that's brand new, super excited about it, really trying to spread the word that that program exists. And then another program that we have for our residential customers is the Electrifier Home Program. And this is a program where the incentive is actually paid to a contractor who is certified with the state as being able to install electric appliances up to their standards. And the funding is for the electrification of household appliances, HVAC, panel upgrades, that sort of thing. And one last residential program I want to tell you about, it's a part of the new construction electrification program. And 3CE has funding for accessory dwelling units. It's up to ten thousand dollars for two projects. So if you're building an all-electric ADU, you can receive five thousand dollars for that project, and you can use two projects. For a total of ten dollars, ten thousand dollars. So those are the residential programs we offer.
Okay, great.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for the question.
All right, I'll take it out to the public. Are there any questions of anyone here?
Hey, Seena, oh, hey, I'm John. I heard a lot of stuff about electric. What about solar?
That is a fantastic question. And it's actually a question that I get a lot. So our investment in solar is at the large-scale level. So we are investing in huge solar projects that are able to help power our entire state. And it's one of the reasons that 3CE is able to keep our rates lower. So we invest in these large-scale solar projects right as they're getting started. And then we're entered into long-term contracts to purchase that energy at a lower cost, which we can then pass on to our customers. We don't have any rebates for rooftop solar, however. The residential battery storage program does pair very well with those who do have solar. Especially with the new changes to net energy nearing in our state. It's much more financially viable to have solar, new solar with a battery. So this program offers our customers the opportunity to increase Uh, so this program offers our customers the opportunity to increase the, their return on investment with their solar panels that they um purchase, but there's no direct.
Like, there's battery storage.
Exactly, yeah. So our program is for battery storage, so they can um store the energy that their solar panels produce and then use it later on in the day when energy is more expensive. Thank you for the question.
Okay, any other questions? Um, Sophia, thank you so much. Uh, just to let folks know, I I serve on the policy board uh for 3CE and our city manager serves on the operation board there. So if if you do have any questions you shouldn't think of, uh, please feel free to speak to any of us and and we'll run it down for you. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate your time this evening.
Absolutely. Okay, our next item is the consent agenda. Is, are there any council members that would like to pull any of the items on the consent agenda? Okay, any members from the public who would like to pull any item on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
All right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Um, we do not have any old business or new business, but I would tell you there are a lot of things going on in the city and you can see that. Uh, whether you look at the area across from Frog Pond and all the construction that's been going on there or down by Safeway, we uh work up on Rosita. There are plenty of things that are happening in Delray Oaks and what I'd like to do before I steal any more thunder is turn it turn it over to the city manager. He's gonna give you an update on all the things that are happening here at Delray Oaks.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so just real quick, because this is a quick meeting, so let's keep it quick. So, uh, if you happen to come by City Hall, you'll see a flurry of uh activity in City Hall. We have new staff that are getting up to speed and getting us new ideas and new ways of doing business and better ways of doing business. And so we're gonna keep moving forward with that. Uh, some of the initiatives we're working on, we're finally getting personnel manual to a point where we can actually bring in and update our personnel manual with current HR and labor laws. Looking at uh online options to help us manage our short-term rental uh process and our tracking and our TOT collection, uh business license collection, business licenses tracking, all that kind of stuff. So that helps take some work off of uh the front counter staff so that they can provide other services to you all when we come to the counter. Um, and then Ron, used to be a young man, that beard you gave me. And he can work here and we can handle projects. So as the mayor mentioned, uh, of course, Fortag, everybody sees the work that's going on uh with Fortag. Um, there's been some delays. We thought we would already have an underpass built by now, but there were some delays with putting in uh our relocating the utilities. That's all getting ironed out. And so next week, right, Ron, they're gonna start the road widening.
That's correct.
All right, yeah. So, uh, so the mayor and I have been beating Tamse's door down, making them uh very aware of what the concerns are that we're hearing from the community. And uh they've been very responsive and changing the construction schedule, changing how they're gonna do the construction to try to mitigate traffic impacts, try not to do work at night, so we're not keeping people up. Um, but we can only do what we can do and some of it is dictated by Caltrans. And uh they're all down in San Luis Obispo and so they're difficult to work with. And when it comes to those types of things, so TFC has done great working with them. Most of the construction along two eighteen is gonna be during the daytime. Uh, while we're here right now is maybe three, four nights. That will be for the, they have to widen the road so that then they can do one-way traffic control when they're doing the underpass. Um, and that uh Caltrans will only allow that work to be done at night. So three or four nights, so please, you know, be patient, bear with us on that. Uh, uh, Camse is doing a really good job putting out information. It's on their website. Uh, if you want to look at our website, we always link to it every time we get it. Uh, we get it on our website. So you can always go to the city website and keep abreast of what's happening with traffic impacts for commuting. Um, but then also in the city, we're gonna have a lot of more, more, more capital improvement projects than the city's ever seen, right, Ron? So the next couple of months, you're gonna see a lot of activity. If you drive on Rosita, for those of you who live on that side of the canyon, uh you'll already see work that's happening there. Uh, some of that work is to repair uh repairing the road that was damaged when a water main broke last year. Uh, but then also there's a spring there. We're putting in a French drain. Uh, to better deal with that water so it doesn't get on the road and degrade the road, so the road will last longer. And then on the uphill side, on the other side, on the creek side from that, with all of the rain that we got the last two years, there's some slippage down into the creek. So we got federal funding to take care of that, so that'll be happening soon. Um, so Rosita is gonna see a lot of construction over the next month or two. Uh, and then at the same time, we'll be doing, uh, we got Calfire wildfire, wildfire fuel reduction grant from the state. And so we'll be doing all along Park over here, along Beaver Day and Park, all the way down to Work Memorial. Uh, you'll see a lot of uh dead trees being removed, brush being removed. And that's all to uh help make the town safer and and less susceptible to wildfires, uh which is good for everybody's home insurance. So that's an apartment project, but that's gonna take about three weeks, is that right, huh? Six weeks, okay. I overpromise him. He he sends me straight. Uh, but then uh we also got, uh, the chief actually got us uh federal grant funding from FEMA to fix the roof that was damaged in the storms. Um, and so that's about seventy-five thousand dollar project uh to fix the roof up here. And so we'll be getting that done. And then also with all the storm-related damage, parking lot's starting to slip out here, so uh, that's not coming up soon, but that's coming up. We're, we're in the works with our city engineer to get that designed and get all of that worked on. We'll be coming to 3CE so that we can get some charging stations when we get the parking lot put in. Uh, and we want to make that a really nice project and build a parking lot that will survive the next seventy years. So a lot of stuff happening. Uh, anything I missed, time to run. All right, thank you, Mayor.
All right. The other thing I'll mention is the city manager's been doing a lot of work behind the scenes on the design and environmental work that needs to be done for Southbound Road. And also uh the work that needs to be done for the development out at Ford orders. So that's taking up a tremendous amount of his time coordinating all of those actions as well.
Yeah, thank you. I did actually forget. I looked over at customer, sure, everybody. Because I promised her a couple of things too. So, uh, uh, yeah, so we are working, we are making progress with the developers of four uh properties out there and starting to plan for development. It's still really kind of boring legal due diligence type stuff with title searches and things like that. So nothing exciting to report yet, other than we are making progress over the next few months. If you guys come back, you'll have more updates on that. Um, and then also hopefully next month, we'll have a housing element for you all to hear with changes. We got the comments from ACB. And hopefully next month, we should have the final, what we think is final response to ACB and be able to get that to them and get our housing all certified. Um, these things take time. We, we, we did an ADU ordinance back in two thousand twenty-one. It was one of the first things we did when I came here. And just a couple of weeks ago, we finally got a response from ACB on our housing, our, our ADU ordinance. So we're gonna be responding to that. We have thirty days to respond. They can take as long as they want to give us their review. We have thirty days to respond. So we'll get them a response on that and then we'll be coming back. They, they, they did have good comments. A good thanks for us to look up, so we'll bring it back to you with recommended changes for the ordinance updating. Some of it has to do with the fact that in the time that they reviewed it, the law's changed and so now our ordinance needs to be updated, but uh so, you know, something I missed.
Something that you need.
No, no, nothing, nothing other than the mayor. Waiting for uh Whitson Engineering to give me some design work. Okay, thank you, city manager.
Yeah. Um, our uh next item, staff reports are in the packet as well as the correspondence. Um, and I know all of you have noticed that council member Rex Gethman is not here for this meeting. He's going through some very challenging times and I would just ask you to include him in your thoughts. Send good vibes, prayers in his direction. Uh, I, I would really appreciate that. Okay, uh, our next meeting is Tuesday, September twenty-four at six P M and we are adjourned.